November twenty-six to order, I rise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Alexander, you want to do the invocation?
Sure. Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord, thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Lord God, continue to cover each and every one of us on this council, continue to cover each and every resident of this city, Lord God. Continue to cover the leadership, our mayor, Lord God, as we continue to go through this pandemic, Lord. Lord, we thank you for all these things we're asking, Lord God. Even the families that are suffering right now from a financial loss, Lord, those that have lost jobs, cover them, Lord God. Cover our teachers and our students as they are in school in the midst of this, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show nine present, three in chambers and six by Zoom, zero absent. Item number three, reading of the minutes.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
The motion is accepted minutes from October thirteen, twenty, twenty and be placed on file, please.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spatelli to accept the minutes and place on file.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilmen Rakels.
Make motion for claims. Twenty and twenty, ending with claims dated ten twenty-one, twenty twenty. Claim forty-nine ten through claim fifty-one thirty-five inclusive, the amount of two million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakels to accept the claims, seconded by Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five, public hearings.
Item A, in order in submitting the schedule of rates and changes and charges for water services funded by the Hammond Water Works Department, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli.
Does anybody wish to speak on this matter, and I see the mayor's up there first. Just, we all know where you're from and all that, but when you do come up to speak, please state your name and where you're from.
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor McDermott, Hammond, Indiana. I appear to speak about the water rate increase. Basic facts about Hammond's water rate. First off, Hammond is a utility, domestic utility supplies water in Indiana to Whiting, obviously the city Hammond, Highland, Munster, Dyer and Griffith, all right? We also supply water to Illinois that does not go to the water utility. The water utility is Indiana utility, makes only money in Indiana. We're talking about a rate increase, only affects Indiana communities. So for communities in Illinois, this has nothing to do with them at all. This proposed rate increase doesn't affect their contracts with the city Hammond in the slightest bit. The existing rates in the city Hammond for water is measured in thousand gallon increments. Each house typically uses about five thousand gallons a month. So we usually, you use those numbers when we're talking about the impact it'll have on Hammond residents. But we sell water to all of our customers in Indiana for forty-four cents for a thousand gallons. Now what happens to that water when it goes to other communities is it's charged quite differently, and we'll discuss that as they come up. But in Hammond, residents pay forty-four cents for a thousand gallons. These rates went into effect in nineteen eighty-five and they haven't been changed since. You know, my father was mayor when this went into effect. I'm, I wish that they were looking far enough down the road at the time that they put in a simple escalator, two percent a year, three percent a year, it automatically adjusts. If they did three percent a year, automatic adjustment back in nineteen eighty-five, all of our lives would be much easier right now. But the rate would be like a dollar ten for a thousand gallons, which funny enough is pretty close to what the I U R C told us it actually costs us to make a thousand gallons of water. In twenty eighteen, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, which is an independent agency, audited the Hammond Water Department and told us it costs a dollar eleven to make a thousand gallons of water, and we sell it for forty-five cents for a thousand gallons, which results in the water utility being flat broke, barely able to pay payroll, not really doing things like investing in its infrastructure, investing in new tanks. In fact, the latest water tank project being undertaken in the Hammond Water Department is being financed by the city Hammond, funny enough. If we get the proposed rate increase at a dollar ninety per thousand gallons, that allow the water utility to use these funds for capital improvements to the filtration plant and the distribution system that are badly needed. And I'd like to remind my neighbors, our neighbors who are here today from our customer communities, if Hammond's water system, filtration system fails, it would be a catastrophic event, not just for Indiana, not just for Hammond, for the south side of Chicago as well. Our customer communities of Lansing, Cayman City, Chicago Heights, Homewood, soon to be, would not have a source of water either if that were to happen. A lot of our neighbors are going to come in here and talk about this being a hardship to you. So I just want to get you ready for this, what you're going to hear from our customer communities. Town of Whiting buys water from the city Hammond at forty-four cents. If the typical resident in Whiting uses five thousand gallons a month, it costs twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents for five thousand gallons, cost of average Whiting resident per month. It only costs Whiting two dollars and twenty-five cents to receive that water. It's an eleven hundred percent markup on what it actually costs to produce that water. We gave them water that's ready to drink. They mark it up eleven hundred percent and use twenty-seven million gallons of water per month. Twelve months a year, town of Whiting, city of Whiting uses three hundred and twenty-four million gallons of water per year. At four dollars and eighty-three cents per thousand gallons, that's a one point five six million dollar a year revenue source. I'm not here to pick on any of our customer communities. Why frankly, city Hammond should have done this in the mid-eighties. We didn't, that's our fault. Hundreds of millions of dollars could have been, tens of millions of dollars could have been invested in the infrastructure of the Hammond Water Utility over the years had we done our job the right way. In nineteen eighty-five, had I done my job the right way when I took over in two thousand four, we didn't, I didn't. We have a proposal before you that'll make it right. The Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission told us it costs a dollar eleven to make a thousand gallons in twenty eighteen. A dollar ninety is what it costs plus a little bit on top so that we can invest these badly needed funds in the infrastructure of the utility. These waters cannot be, this money cannot be used in our city budget. This can't be used for any projects, it has to be used for the water utility, and that's where the money's going to go. And if our water utility fails, if the infrastructure in our system fails, and it's old, it affects not just Hammond, it affects everybody in the south side of Chicago, basically. So I will, I'm not trying to pick on city Whiting, I see them here, I see other people here as well. I have how much water they actually use. I have how much they actually charge, and I know how much it costs them because we gave it to them. So we could talk about what the motivations are here. It's not reasonableness, it was unreasonable for us to charge forty-five cents for a thousand gallons, that was unreasonable. That was a mistake, I'll take the blame for it. But right now, we could sell water in Illinois for three dollars and fifty cents for a thousand gallons, and we're only charging forty-five cents. Whose fault is that? Our fault. The proposal before you, if you approve it to a dollar ninety per a thousand gallons, Hammond Water will still be the cheapest in the state of Indiana. Can I say that one more time? If you approve the rate increase, Hammond Water will still be the cheapest in the state of Indiana. It's a fact. So I understand it's a big leap, I would be upset if I was a customer community also. We have contracts that deal with these customer communities, and I want to reiterate to everybody, we'll follow the contract one hundred percent. If the contract says you have to delay it, we will delay it. If the contract doesn't, if it's earmarked to what Hammond residents pay, that's what the contract says. We appreciate you as a customer, we want you to continue as a customer, but we intend to follow our contracts to the letter of the law. I'm available for any questions the council may have. Councilman?
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this issue? Just state your name and what your address.
Thank you, and I, my name is Sherry Brackey McNeil, I'm here on behalf of the town of Griffith. And I thank the mayor for that history, I am not aware of most of it, and unfortunately I have to start by objecting to the hearing because I just received notice of this just a couple hours ago, I had no idea I was coming here today. My understanding is the town of Griffith received a certified letter today, and obviously I have absolutely no ability to check. It had no date on it, which was the notice other than something taking place on October thirteenth here. But obviously with that history and if that is, I have no reason to doubt that those were the rates that were put in it in nineteen eighty-five. But in order to have an actual hearing, we have to be given proper notice in order to prepare for that hearing and dig into all that and express our views. So my first objection is that this not, it can not be held with such notice. And I frankly have not even been able to, I was supposed to be at another hearing at six-thirty, so I diverted and I'm here, but I certainly need to look into all of that in order to have a proper hearing where both sides can argue their case. But for the record, I will just say that obviously our position will be that the rates are unreasonable without the proper notice in order to, what I at least read in the paper quickly and what I've just heard is basically tripling the rates without a proper hearing or notice or figuring this all out. So we have to object, obviously, and certainly I would ask that the common council would not vote on this until a time when we can have discussions and an ability to have a hearing like this and provide you with everything in response to what the mayor just discussed. Thank you very much. I assume there's no questions or anything?
No, I explained earlier, this is a public hearing, this has been advertised, we've met on this, it was in the paper, and this is the public's turn to tell us how they feel.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor.
As for the guests, the mayor has the right to intervene at any time during a council member, I know that council is aware of that. I just want to remind people that this is a normal protocol. Town of Griffith, interesting facts, I could also go through how much water they use, but first off, I know all of our customer communities received a letter from the Hammond Water Company a couple months ago, everyone, all of our customer communities, about all of our Indiana customer communities received notice from the attorney for the water board who's here. Ms. Levinson, do you remember the date you sent those out? What's that? Well, while she's looking, I want to inform everybody, town of Griffith's contract with the city Hammond Water Department lapsed at the end of twenty nineteen. We don't have a current contract with the city Hammond Water Company right now. We still sell them water under the terms of the old contract because we're good neighbors. It's a fact, though, the contract expired December thirty-first, twenty nineteen with no notice to renew. So we need to renegotiate a new contract with the town of Griffith. But while we're talking about that, town of Griffith uses forty-two million gallons of water per month, that's five hundred and four million gallons of water per year. They charge our residents five dollars and seventy-nine cents for a thousand gallons, which is a twelve hundred percent markup on what they buy it from the city Hammond for, and profit two point nine million dollars a year off of Hammond Water. We give them finished water, and they make three million dollars a year, every year, which is fine, I'm not begrudging them, that's a fact. I would be here arguing if I was from the town of Griffith as well. I would be here mad about this revenue source being jeopardized if I was from the town of Griffith. It's a twelve hundred percent markup, these are facts from the Hammond Water Department. Donna, did you find out when? October fourteenth, from the water board, so, thank you.
Anybody else care to speak, sir? Just state your name and where you're from, please.
Yes, my name is John Haynes, I'm the clerk treasurer of the city of Whiting. I'll start off saying thank you for allowing me to talk to you tonight. I'm not sure where the mayor got his data, but it's not correct. Number one, the minimum bill for three thousand gallons for a customer is not what he said. It is actually nine dollars and three cents. And if they use five thousand gallons, it's fifteen dollars and five cents. But let me give you a little data that I have for the city of Whiting. In two thousand nineteen, we paid the city or the water department a hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars to purchase water. Based on that number, if we use the rates that you're, you may pass here at a dollar ninety, we will pay the water works six hundred and sixteen thousand and three hundred and sixty dollars. An increase of four hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. To give you a little perspective, our total revenue per metered water in nineteen was six hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We would be paying the city of Hammond more money to purchase the water than our current revenue. Our profit in two thousand nineteen was thirty thousand, seventy dollars. So the comments that other communities that are buying water from Hammond are making huge profit is not that in Whiting. That's completely fake news. I know you're charging your other customer, your retail customers, but we are a wholesaler. And I know there's nothing in the statute that talks about wholesaling. Based on the three hundred and thirteen percent increase in our water rates, we do not believe we are violating our contract since the contract indicates in the event that the utility does request said modification to a single flat rate, the, that Whiting will not reasonably, unreasonably object to join any petition, file any required documents or attend proceedings which may be necessary to effect said modification before the Indiana Regulatory Commission or any other public body, and agrees to abide by such adjusted single flat rate and to pay the same. The key word in that contract is unreasonable. And we are saying before this public body that a three hundred and thirteen percent increase is not reasonable. In December of two thousand seventeen, the Hammond Water Works Department petitioned the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission to seek seven point five million dollars in revenue bonds from the Hammond Bond Bank. You also indicated in that petition that the principal and interest of the new Water Works revenue bonds will be payable, will, will pay the principal and interest of the new Water Works revenue bonds. What is surprising is that you said you would not have to increase rates, that your normal operating expenses would be paid. So you weren't asking for a water rate increase. My question to the council, and you won't have the answer, obviously, is what has significantly happened since December of two thousand seventeen? When you were going to raise seven point five million dollars and you weren't going to raise rates because you said you had enough money to run those operations? One other thing, the honorable mayor McDermott said we were paying forty-four cents, we're paying forty-six cents.
That's probably true, I apologize clerk. And I would like to point out to the clerk that using our assumption of twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents for five thousand gallons, which is what we did for everybody, it wasn't particular to Whiting, sir. In Whiting, it costs you nine dollars and six cents per month just to hook up to the system. In Hammond, it costs you three bucks, okay? In Whiting, it costs you nine dollars and six cents a month, and then three dollars and two cents per thousand for the first five thousand. I said assuming five thousand gallons for this discussion, which is what most houses use, I use more, okay? I imagine most houses in Hammond are around five thousand, so we did simple math. Three dollars and two cents per thousand times five is twenty, is, and plus nine point oh six is twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents for five thousand gallons of water in Whiting. It costs Whiting two dollars and twenty-five cents for that water that they charge twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents for. That's eleven hundred percent markup. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the clerk, that five thousand gallons was for ease of discussion because that's what most houses use per month. I wasn't trying to penalize Whiting, it was just a fact. If we're talking about one thousand gallons, I agree, it would be much less.
We only speak one time, but if you got, if you want to be real, real brief, go ahead. If you want to be real, real brief, go ahead, but we, I don't want to get into a debate here.
I just want to say that based on my math, we pay three, the customer pays three dollars per thousand, so they would pay fifteen dollars and some cents for five thousand gallons. The other thing I would like to say is that we, Hammond doesn't pay for any of our infrastructure, so all we're doing is purchasing water, so, and it goes through our infrastructure right by the water plant.
Thank you, and I just want to remind everybody, we're not debating this.
Mr. President, true on both counts, but they charge three dollars and two cents per thousand gallons in Whiting, costs twenty, forty-six cents, okay? But it also costs nine dollars and six cents a month just to hook up to the system, which is a blended rate of twenty-four, sixteen for five thousand gallons. I agree with clerk treasurer, though. The infrastructure costs of Whiting are borne by the city, by the city's utility, I agree with him on that.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Please state your name and where you're from, sir.
Good evening, Adam Sedia, I'm the attorney for the town of Dyer, and I would just like to echo the objections raised by the town of Griffith. And as the council knows, Dyer is in a unique situation as we are downstream from Highland in this whole network. So our objection is based on largely the same facts that Highland will raise. Additionally, I would like to point out to the council that Dyer has yet to receive the letters that the mayor says went out. In addition, we believe the rate is unjust, unfair and unreasonable contrary to statute, and we do intend on joining the other customer communities in taking this process further. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
The mayor didn't send out the letter over the mayor's signature, I assume that the water board attorney was not lying to me when she told me she sent letters to the customer communities, okay? So town of Dyer, I agree, is downstream of Highland, and it's a blended, since they're using the same metering system. These two towns use a hundred and four million gallons of water per month, which is a lot of water, it's one point two four eight E nine gallons per year. They charge their residents in Highland and in Dyer, nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents is actually one of the cheapest communities. It'll be the second cheapest community in northwest Indiana outside of Hammond, will still be the cheapest. But nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents for five thousand gallons, which is a real good rate, which is three dollars and ninety-one cents for a thousand gallons, that's really what you're charging your customers, Mr. Sedia, three dollars and ninety-one cents, and you're buying it for forty-six cents, which is an eight hundred and fifty percent markup. Four point eight million dollars a year between the two communities. I don't know what the split is, but four point eight million dollars a year between the two communities. Eight hundred and fifty percent markup, which is the smallest markup, Highland and Dyer, smallest markup out of all the communities that use our water.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, I'm Robert Tweedle, I'm here on behalf of the Highland Water Works Board. I'm here just to document our objection to the proposed increase. First of all, I would like to point out, this matter is not properly before this body this evening. The advertised notice did not set forth the proposed schedule of rates and charges, that's a requirement in the statute. That, all that was advertised was just a small reference to the hearing this evening, that's not adequate for, for action this evening. As far as letters, Highland did receive a letter on the nineteenth. It did provide proposed volumetric rates, but did not provide any meter charges for us. Also, it only referenced the proposed ordinance twenty dash twenty-five, did not include a copy of it, and the only way that we were allowed to receive a copy was that we had to send somebody, would have to send somebody to the city to obtain a copy, I don't know why it was, it was not provided to the communities. Fortunately, someone did provide us with a copy of that. I would also like to point out, it is our position, Highland's position, that the proposed rates are unjust, unreasonable and discriminatory. In addition to that, the proposed ordinance also provides for automatic annual meter rate increases effective as of January first, twenty twenty-four. That type of automatic perpetual increase is illegal and should not be included in your ordinance.
Mayor.
I have a hard time finding, I have a hard time understanding how Highland could say that a dollar ninety per thousand gallons is unreasonable when they charge their own residents three dollars and ninety-one cents. Even if we pass this rate increase, they'll still have a hundred percent left to markup to their residents. But do they need eight hundred percent, nine hundred percent? Hundred percent's not good enough.
Anyone else care to speak?
Good evening, my name is George Smith, I'm currently serving as the president of the Highland Water Board. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council tonight. I'm not here to quibble with the mayor about whatever he does or does not think the rate should or should not be. While some level of increase may be warranted, a non-graduated rate increase for wholesale customers of two hundred and eighty percent is arbitrary, abusive and unreasonable at this time. There are many alleged deficiencies in the procedure, so I just pray this council will table consideration of this ordinance until such time as a full consideration of the structure as it affects the commercial, industrial and wholesale customers served by the Hammond Water Works. Thank you again for allowing me to address this council, God bless you all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Dustin Anderson, I'm the town manager of Munster, Indiana, here on behalf of the town council of Munster. Thank you for holding the hearing, Mayor, thank you, I look forward to hearing some fun facts about my town. The town of Munster recognizes that it is necessary and appropriate to adjust rates for utilities from time to time. The town also recognizes that the current water rates are not sufficient to adequately cover the water department's operational and maintenance activities. I think we can all agree that thirty-five years is a long time. However, we are very concerned about the ordinance. The proposed rate, effective in only sixty-seven days, will be an over three hundred percent increase. And that increase will be borne by homes, businesses and institutions. These additional costs are headwinds that are in addition to the already challenging times all these people have had to endure this, this year already. This does not seem, from a mere timeline perspective, just or reasonable. If it is indeed the correct rate, and perhaps it is, for the safe and responsible management of the utility, then certainly there must be a way to phase this in gradually over time. Thank you for your time, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, Dustin. We agree that our rate is low, and I appreciate you acknowledging that, and I realize that you're concerned with the proposed rate, and I just appreciate your professionalism and kind words. I'd like to point out, town of Munster uses a hundred and six million gallons of water per month, which is one point two seven two E nine gallons of water per year. They charge our residents four dollars and ninety-nine cents per thousand gallons, which is eleven hundred percent markup on what they get charged by the city Hammond, and their revenue source is six point three million a year. Again, I don't begrudge town of Munster, I go to town of Munster every day of my life. I think they've done a great job in the town of Munster, by the way, Highland, Whiting, Griffith, Dyer, gorgeous communities. I think they've done wonderful, and I appreciate them as a neighbor. I think they've done wonderful, and I appreciate them as a neighbor. All right? But this isn't, I love Whiting. I love all these communities we're talking about. All right? To come up here and say, "The proposed rate in the city of Hammond is unreasonable at $1.90 when you're charging your own residents $4.99," is disingenuous. I get it, it's all at once. I wish it weren't. I acknowledge that. I wish that there was some way this was adjusted over time. It wasn't. It was negligent on my part as mayor that we haven't done it before now. It's my fault. I should have done it earlier, but I didn't, and here we are. But, and I appreciate our neighbors being here. We appreciate them as customers. We want to continue to keep them as customers. We hope that they would just absorb the rate increase, quite frankly, and not raise it on your residents. You know, like in Munster, why don't you absorb it and still charge $4.99 to your residents? It would cost you a lot more for the wholesale water. You don't have to raise it on your residents. We're not charging more than $4.99. Thanks for listening, council.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
I'm Mary Ellen Slazek. A lot of you here know me. I've been here for a while. It's been a bad year for me. I'm a senior. I'm a widowed senior, and I'm on a fixed income. I'm collecting social security on my late husband's account, which is a lot more than, well, it was from my account, but still not a lot. And this increase is ridiculous, is the only way I'm going to say it. 5,000 gallons? Seriously? I'm a single, at home. I don't have a swimming pool. I'm not watering a garden, but I'm using 6,000. That's what my bill says. Here, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to look at it.
Two months.
Two months. Well, it says 6,000, not 5,000.
For two months.
Because everything, well, no, there was been a figure of 5,000, based on 5,000 average. That's a bunch of malarkey. I got 6,000 here. Like I say, I don't have a swimming pool. I'm not watering the garden. I have energy-efficient appliances, and this is ridiculous. There's a lot of people besides me, or worse both than I'm in, that are, live on fixed incomes, or their incomes have been greatly affected by this COVID. Okay? And they're barely making it. Where you've got people that are working full-time, they're not getting minimum wage, you're getting more than minimum wage, but to support their families, they're also qualifying for food stamps, and they're having hard times. There's a lot of seniors out there like me, on a fixed income, and I'm going to pickle half the time. Well, I've had a really bad year all the way around, because I even had a water heater go out a couple of weeks ago and dumped all over my basement floor. So it's been rough. For me, or anybody else on a fixed income or a lower income, to come up with a little bit extra money, it's going to be rough. Times are hard out there, and look at the demographics of Hammond, where you've got a school city where all these kids are getting free lunch and free breakfast, and it's because so many, a high percentage of the children qualify because their parents' incomes are lower. Now, there's a lot of these lower-income parents that are renting, and there are some that are homeowners, but they're all going to be hit because the rents are going to go up some more, and the homeowners that are just struggling and trying to feed their kids, working, doing the right thing, they're going to be hit by this, too. You're taking it away from them, and you're definitely taking away from the seniors and the disabled people on a fixed income. This doesn't seem like a right, right now, I have only got a few bucks to my name. I'm just about broke after all the disasters I've had this year, and it's rough for me. And a few dollars means a lot to me. Maybe it doesn't mean something much to anybody who's got a very good income and lives in a good part of town, but for me, and many people like me, this hurts like heck. And if you'd like to look at my bill, it is 6,000 gallons. Okay? And like I say, I have energy-efficient appliances, I do the right thing environmentally, and I still got this, and this is going to be jacked up heck no.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
The $6,000, or 6,000 gallons on your bill is a two-month period, which is 3,000 gallons per month, which is below a typical household, which makes sense because Ms. Slazek lives alone, or it's a smaller family, so she doesn't use 5,000 gallons like a typical family does. I bet you my family uses 7,000 gallons a month. Okay? But I did miss the math on Ms. Slazek's bill, on what her new bill would be, how much higher it would be per month, $4.50 a month. I'm, and I get it, people on fixed income, I get it, that that's a lot of money to some people, and I, and I acknowledge that, you know, for some people, it's not a big deal, and for other people, it's a big deal. But like, I would like to point out that we have programs for our seniors and people on fixed incomes that cost the city of Hammond a million dollars a year that we provide to our residents that are on fixed incomes and living real close to the line. But using Ms. Slazek's own numbers, it's $4.50 increase per month is what we're talking about. $4.50 a month. It's a Starbucks cup of coffee per month.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Phil.
Good evening, council. Phil Talon, chief of staff for the city of Hammond. I know last meeting, I brought my bill and went through it. I know there's a lot of new people here, so I just thought, one more time, I'd, I'd just give a real-life example for everybody. I didn't handpick a special bill for the year. This is my last bill that I just received a week and a half ago. Actually, it's very similar to Ms. Slazek's bill, but my bill for water for two months was $8.63. So that basically breaks down to about $4.31 a month. Because there's a $3 base rate, that means I'm paying about $1.31 in flow rate for a month for my entire house, which is a family of three. I have another son, but he's at college, so he doesn't count right now. This bottle of water costs $1.99 at Walgreens. For my entire house for the month, as of right now, I'm paying $1.31. So you could see there's a bit of a discrepancy in, in costs when you start thinking about 1,000 gallons versus this bottle of water. With this rate increase, my bill will go up just over $5 a month. So again, I just want to give a real-life example. I'm happy to talk to any residents that, that have their bill, that want to compare and, and look at numbers and what their bill will go up every month, but again, I think you can hear the numbers and, and get a good idea of where we're at now and probably where we need to be. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this issue?
Good evening, council members. Gary Dreischer, 5th District, Hessville, Hammond. Okay, so I did a little research myself, and I did talk to people in Whiting today. And yes, Whiting's $3.02, where they use zero or 1,000 gallons of water, and every thousand, up to 50,000 gallons, they charge $3.02. Also, Whiting's, the garbage fee, they charge $5.46 a month. We pay $21 a month in Hammond. Okay? East Chicago, they don't charge their residents anything for garbage pickup. Okay? MS4, Hammond's got MS4 fee. That's supposed to do with the sewers and water separation and all that. Anyway, East Chicago does have MS4, similar to Hammond residents. There's like 96, we're 93. Their commercial is only $288, where Hammond's $1,080 per year on their property taxes. Okay? Your sewer fees, there's a base rate. Hammond will be approximately $8.40 a month. EC is at $8.90 a month. Whiting is $12.99 a month, but it also includes up to 3,000 gallons of treated waste, or I was told. So anyway, that's how they do their stuff. I'm just trying to get something that, let's have a compromise. If we're going to do, and I'm fine with the water increase, because I know it's been low, and to do repair and stuff, but why can't we get a trade-off? Why are we paying so much for garbage fees when other communities, cities, I should say, like I say, there's no charge at all, like East Chicago, or minimum, like Whiting does, $5.46 a month? You know, I just feel we should get more benefits out of this. You know, this is my, but I've got other rates. I mean, like sewer rates, Hammond's, what, about $2,040 treated sewer per thousand? East Chicago, $2,034. I think Whiting coming up to be like $1.40 or something like that for 1,000, after that $3,000, something like that. So, I mean, a lot of the stuff you can find online, you can call them, they'll talk to you, whatever. I just want to compare city to city. That's how I want to do things. And, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to do. I, I mean, I realize we need the money to fix our infrastructure. My street is terrible. Dave Orples, you know, but I wish we could have some compromise, too, that, hey, if we're going to pay an increase, why can't we decrease our garbage fee or something? Do something else and trade off it? You know? Okay, well, thank you, anyway. That's my speech.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President.
Mayor.
I want to address, even though we're not talking about garbage rates, I want, this is applicable, because East Chicago, I don't know if this is true or not, I imagine it is, let's say East Chicago doesn't charge for their garbage pickup. Wow, that must be great. They must just magically incinerate their garbage, and it just disappears, right? The garbage has to be paid for. If it's not being paid for by a user fee, it's being paid for by property taxes, being paid in other ways. It just doesn't magically disappear. When you turn on your faucet, it's like, wow, look at that! You just put a faucet in, and water appears? No. We have to put infrastructure in to get the water to your front door. But the fact is, in Hammond, we charge exactly what it costs to pick up your garbage and to dispose of it. We don't make a penny off that. We did it on purpose like that. Also, we seem to be talking a lot about what reasonableness is in regards to water rates. Our proposed rate would be $1.90 to our customer communities. Indiana American Water charges $5.22 per 1,000 gallons. Crown Point, I love Crown Point, my good friend is the mayor of Crown Point, charges $8.80 per 1,000 gallons. That's, that's a lot of money. We're talking about $1.90 if the rate increase is approved. So what is reasonable? In Crown Point, they would kill to pay $1.90 for 1,000 gallons. They would kill to pay that. My brother's water bill, he watered his lawn during August, September. His water bill was $800 in one month. He didn't realize, holy crap, you can't water your lawn down here because the water's so expensive. So what is reasonable? 44 cents is not reasonable. I think we all agree on that. Some, and the argument is being made that $1.90 is not reasonable. I tell you what, you shop around to our neighbors, $1.90 is, they would kill for $1.90 for 1,000
Does anybody else wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President, council. Good evening. Kevin Smith, corporation counsel for the city. Just to, first of all, I guess I do want to thank some of my colleagues, Mr. Sedia, Ms. Bradkey, Mr. Tweedle, Ms. Seña, Mr. Anderson, for coming by tonight. It sounds like we're going to have some further discussions on this matter, and I look forward to those. The reason I wanted to speak is to address some things about reasonableness, and just to give the council some context, because I think when you see numbers thrown around like 330% increase or 400% increase, it may sound, oh my gosh, that sounds just on its face unreasonable, but really, as always, it's, it's important to have some sort of contextual basis and understanding where that comes from. First of all, as the mayor pointed out, and it's been pointed out several times, the city has not raised water rates since 1985. And by the way, that does not account for any inflation. Mayor pointed out that just cost of living increase would put that number somewhere around 90 cents to a dollar today. There was no accounting for any infrastructure improvements during that time between 1985, the rate, I'm talking about the rate only. Additionally, the IURC did a study in 2018 that said the cost of just providing the water without any accounting for infrastructure improvements was $1.11. In 2019, they updated that study to $1.20. That was from the IURC. Mayor alluded to the fact that the water tank that we all know doesn't look too good at 165th and Columbia. The water department, the Water Works, did not have the money to pay for that. That was paid out of a TIF, $2.5 million. Interestingly, there was an independent rate study done by Baker Tilly. It was called the Indiana Comparative Rate Study. It was done in May of 2019. They looked at 368 utilities throughout the state of Indiana. The minimum for the flow charge per thousand, the minimum of all 368 communities was 44 cents per thousand. Guess where that was? City of Hammond. The maximum of all 368 utilities was $22.40 per thousand. And I think the important number, the average, 696 per thousand out of all 368 utilities. They also took a look at what the base charges were, and that's that base charge that you see on your bill. I think it comes in at $5.99 per two months, which is what most of us get our bills at, but per month, that's just rounded off to $3. They looked at all 368 utilities. The minimum of all 368 utilities was, you guessed it, $3. Guess where? Hammond. The maximum charge for the, for that, for the rate, the base charge was 46.32, 46.32. The average of the 368 was 18.31. There is no proposed increase on that base rate. It's still going to stay at $3, which will keep us the lowest. I think that's all I had. I had one, actually, someone handed me, mayor, could you hand me that? This is actually just a little fun fact, I guess, that I'll end with. Phil had a nice prop up here, that Aquafina bottle is about 16 ounces. You pay about $1.90 at the gas station for it. Somebody down at the Water Works did a calculation that at $1.90 per 1,000 gallons, you could actually fill up, for that $1.90 you paid at the gas station, if you just did it with your tap, you could fill up 7,570 gallons, or I'm sorry, 7,570 bottles for $1.90 per 1,000. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else wish to speak on this issue? Does anyone else wish to speak on this issue? Guess I'm going to ask the city of Hammond, Chris, is there anybody that, from the public that you see with their hand up or anything on Zoom? So no one wishes to speak from Zoom either? Public hearing is now closed. Item number six, communications. Are there any communications? Are there any communications? Communications are now closed. Item number seven, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. Council as a whole will be bringing out 2025, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, 2026, 2027, and
Thank you. You want to do your crime watch report now, then?
Yes. For those of you who have not been with us before, we all know that we never expected the restrictions that we would have on the crime watch meetings that we have every month. Some people went to schools, and the schools don't allow outside organizations in the school for obvious reasons, and, and many of the other facilities that we use for precautionary measures are not allowing us to conduct our meetings there. So this has been a challenge for us to communicate with our residents. However, as with anything else, we've had to kind of step out of the box a little bit and, and put our thinking caps on, so, you know, we kind of followed the lead of many communities that now conduct Zoom meetings. And the Hammond Police Department and the community crime watch groups will be hosting a virtual crime watch meeting on Tuesday, November 10th, at 6:00 p.m. That can be found on the Hammond, Indiana Police Department Facebook page. The information, the Zoom information will be available so anyone can participate, and someone monitors the, the comments made on the Facebook, and, and we will try to address those. There is one group who has been allowed to go to Calumet College, and that is the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch. They will meet on Thursday, November 12th, at 6:30 p.m. in room 200, and that is at Calumet College. For those of you who have not attended a community or crime watch meeting in the past, please tune in. You get some very helpful information. You find out what's going on in your neighborhood, and it encourages all of us to work together and watch out for our neighbors, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Are there any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Councilwoman Alexander, did you have the update on the, that you usually give?
Yes, I did. The update for our COVID numbers from last meeting to this meeting, for 46320, they're For 46320, there is an additional 40 new cases. For 46327, there's an additional 41 cases. For 46323, there's an additional 85 cases. For 46324, there's an additional 75 cases. And for 46394, which includes Robertsdale and Whiting, is additional 35 cases. We are up an additional 276 cases from the last meeting. I know mayor is present, and mayor, I want to make a motion that we get back to our COVID task force meetings because our numbers are rising extremely fast. I know the governor put the entire state into stage five, but we really need to look out for our residents. You, I'm suggesting, you know, you speak out on, you know, wearing masks, sanitizing. Maybe we can create some good videos or something to help combat this as a city. Because the entire state is up. Lake County is still the second highest in COVID numbers. It's affecting everyone. Kids are going back to school. They're proposing for them to come back to school, and our numbers are just on the rise. So that, that is just my proposal, that we get back to our COVID task force meetings so we can combat this in our city and help keep our residents safe. Because like I said, we were originally averaging about 100 cases between meetings. Last meeting, we were at 220. This meeting, we're now at 276. I don't know if the Lake County site, how true their numbers is, but that's all I have to go with. And going off of those numbers, which I keep every two weeks for us, we're, we're extremely high. We're, we've actually, from the beginning of this pandemic, when they were rising at 100 cases every two weeks, we're rising now, we're at three times that number now, and we have to do something as a city.
Thank you. Mayor?
Mr. President, thank you, Councilwoman. We had weekly, twice weekly meetings during the teeth of the pandemic, and I realize numbers are similar. I'm not going to deny that numbers now are similar to numbers back then, and I think your decision, I mean, your recommendation is a good recommendation, Councilwoman. I found personally that attendance started to fall off greatly in the coronavirus task force. I found that we were saying the same thing, meeting to meeting, and we did have people watch it, though. I don't deny that. And I just feel like if we're going to do something, hopefully people are participating, and if they're not, I feel like maybe we're just doing this. And I don't know. I'm not making excuses, Councilwoman. I think it's a good recommendation. I just want to make sure if we're going to do something like that, it's effective because we need doctors to cooperate. We need people to come and meet and so, but I agree, Councilwoman. I know people personally that are sick with it, and it's a deadly and dangerous disease, and that's why we're all wearing masks in City Hall, and that's, that's why you're zooming in. So I appreciate you reminding us all, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Is there any other committee reports? Hearing no other committee reports. Committee reports are now closed.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I would like to suspend the rules and move resolution number 20R-18 up in the interest of saving some time.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules with the intent to move resolutions up, seeing that there are no action being taken on 20R-17. That would be 20R-18. Is there a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez to suspend the rules, seconded by Scott Rakos. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Worple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed to suspending the rules. So, item under number 10, item B, 20R-19.
18.
I'm sorry, 20R-18. Clerk Golick.
20R-18, the sponsors are Councilmen Spatelli, Torres, Tyler, and Emerson. A resolution to honor American Legion Hammond Victory Post 168 commander Ernest Ernie Dillon and officially named the tribute to our troops memorial at the intersection of Lyman Avenue and Douglas Street where the Monon and Erie Lackawanna bike trail intersection in Hammond. Whereas, the general membership of the American Legion Hammond Victory Post 168 unanimously approved honoring Commander Ernie Dillon and naming the tribute called Tribute to Our Troops' Operation Enduring Freedom Memorial in Commander Dillon's honor at the monthly meeting on June 4th, 2018. Whereas, Commander Dillon served as project coordinator, secured the location designated, constructed and arranged all funding through sponsorships, has maintained the memorial since November 11th, 2013. We generally appreciate Ernie's dedication and commitment honoring our military families, veterans, and those who are currently serving and will serve in the future. Whereas, this memorial was established on November 11th, 2013, and is to be debit dedicated on November 11th, 2020 to honor all military personnel, past, present, and future. This includes, but not as limited to, the United States Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, National Guard, and Space Force. Whereas, this tribute to our troops operating enduring freedom, ongoing since September 11th, 2001, shall also include a tribute to women at war, since women are approaching 20% of our armed forces and now serve in all ranks and branches of our military. As an example, Barbara Ann Barrett was recently appointed as the 25th Secretary of the United States Air Force and Space Force. She was also the first woman to land an FA-18 Hornet on an aircraft carrier and trained as an astronaut. Whereas, Veterans Day was a date chosen to honor our memorial and is a public holiday held on the anniversary of the end of World War I, August 1914 through November 11th, 1918, during which 20 million people died. Whereas, Veterans Day was created to honor U.S. veterans and victims of all wars and replaced Armistice Day in 1954 during the 11th hour of the 11th month when the war ended. The location of this memorial is known to be a troop train stop station where military persons boarded the train to Chicago and deployed across the world. Whereas, it is desired that signed it similar to the one here will be placed at the Tribute to Our Troops Memorial Site. A tribute to our troops, Commander Ernest Ernie Dillon, American Legion Hammond Victory Post 168, established in November 11th, 2013, dedicated November 11th, 2020, presented by Mayor Thomas McDermott, City Clerk Robert Golick, Hammond City Council, Councilwoman Alexander, Councilwoman Jennifer Nez, Councilman Spatelli, Councilman Kelwinski, Councilman Torres, Councilman Tyler, Councilman Emerson, Councilman Worple, and Councilman Rakos. Therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Hammond that the common council on behalf of the citizens of City of Hammond duly recognize Ernest Ernie Dillon by including his name to the Tribute to Troops Memorial at the intersection of Lyman Avenue and Douglas Street where the Monon and Erie Lackawanna bike train intersected in Hammond, Indiana.
So having been read by title and read in its entirety, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spatelli.
Final passage for 20R-18.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spatelli, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez and Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Spatelli.
First, I want to thank Councilman Barry Tyler for getting this organized. Three of us belong to post 168, myself, Mr. Torres, and Will Emerson. We're all aboard with him with post 168. Ernie had been the backbone of getting back post 168 up and running again. He deserves what he has done throughout his career and is a man with many hats. Thank you, Ernie, for bringing our post 168 back to earth again. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to just comment on resolution 20R-18. Ernie and I go way back. I want to just add, I know that it's about the memorial at Douglas and Lyman, but I wanted to mention a few other things he's done for the vets. Long ago, the day for military families at the National Guard Armory on 173rd Street, where he dedicated the whole day to the families of active duty personnel and veterans in general. The Veterans Appreciation Day Parade on Veterans Day in Hammond, the seventh annual, is 11/7 Saturday, where he is the co, gosh, I was that, the co-leader of the Veterans Parade this year. One of the original founders of the Veterans Views Radio Program. He was instrumental over 10 years ago in sending care packages to, about 15 years ago, to Iraq and Afghanistan veterans. He's a past service, a veteran service officer for Lake County, helping veterans get the services if they needed them. He has been instrumental in rehabbing a Civil War veteran's tombstone at Oak Hill Cemetery. And I'm sure I'm forgetting something. Oh, yes, and three-time commander of post 168. Thank you, Ernie, for all you have done for the veterans of Lake County. Boy, just congratulations.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate post 168 and their commander, Ernie, and to all the troops, past and present. Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilman Torres, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Mark. Come on, Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you, sir. Post 168, I too am a social member there and have watched Ernie for decades champion many causes regarding the military and veterans. So, Ernie, congrats again on getting some, some more things done. And if possible, Mr. President, I'd like my name added as a sponsor to this resolution.
I, Councilman Kelwinski, I have no problem with that. In fact, in adding everyone's, the council as a whole to this. But my question is to the attorney, can we pass it with, I mean, can we consider it with more than four sponsors?
I think so. We've done it before.
Okay, so does, does anybody object to putting council as a whole down as a sponsor?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm the one that typed this up, but there are a couple type of holes that I would like to get corrected. So I don't know if I need to make that motion to correct that now, or if I can just connect with the clerk's office after the meeting.
Um, would that, you talking about how it would be written on the memorial?
And just in the resolution in general. The title of the resolution is just, it says intersection instead of intersection.
Uh, don't, do you have, like, are you proposing an amendment to it or just?
Correction.
Corrections? Okay, that, that's fine. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Mayor?
On behalf of Mr. Dillon, when I first got out of the Navy, he's one of the first people I met that worked for county government at the time. He was the Veterans Affairs Officer. He's, ever since the day I met Ernie, he's been a veteran. He's proud of it. He wears it on his sleeve. He works hard for the community. And this, the, the bike trail stop that he did right over by 18th Street Brewery, he doesn't know this story. I ride my bike a lot, people know that. And I was cooking one day, going real fast, and it was like 100 degrees out, maybe 95 degrees out that day, and I was heading up towards Whiting. And as I passed that little memorial, Ernie was down there by himself planting flowers. I didn't stop because I was, I had good time going, okay? But I went up to Whiting, did my circle around Whiting, I started heading back down home. Hour and a half later, and I pass up that same spot, Ernie's out there planting flowers by himself. It's like 95 degrees out that day. This guy does so many things for the community. He had no idea, I didn't stop the second time either, Ernie, I appreciate it. But I am acknowledging it publicly right now. He's an asset to the city of Hammond. He's an asset to veterans across Northwest Indiana, and I just want to congratulate him again. Could you give him one more round of applause, everybody?
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Tyler.
Yes, I know that we've already suspended the general meeting, so hopefully if, if Mr. Ernie would like to say something, we'd give him an opportunity to.
Thank you. Do you want him to speak, you want to speak before or after we? Hearing no further discussion. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Worple.
Yes, let the record show, the resolution passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Mr. Dillon, you wish to speak for a second?
Mr. President, with all of that said, I'm going to just go to in, in conclusion. Mr. President, mayor, members of the council, let me begin by saying the city of Hammond is truly a city that works, especially honoring our military veterans and their families. Mayor McDermott, Navy slash Air Force, oh, Navy, right? A Navy veteran established the Veterans Appreciation Day Parade to honor all veterans many years ago, and it's still moving forth every year. Also, I want to thank our city council members, whom several are veterans, who spoke this evening, and Clerk Golick for your dedication to the city of Hammond and our veterans and their families. This resolution tonight says it all. A memorial in the city of Hammond, a new memorial, to honor our veterans from all wars, those who are serving and those who will be serving. A tribute to our troops and women at war. Just briefly, that's Just briefly, that site was chosen at the bike trail, and I want to thank the mayor for all his work on bike trails. They're tremendous asset for the City of Hammond. Thank you, Mayor. And that was chosen specifically for that reason, to be there where the bike trail intersects because of the tribute to our troops back in the day. It was a train stop. And so, having said all of that, I want to also thank all our sponsors. And I'm proud to, about the city elected officials in Hammond being part of our sign, our memorial, that we're going to put up there and have their names displayed as well as the sponsors who helped us work on this memorial. So, I guess with that, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor, and those on Zoom, whatever that is, I want to thank everyone for their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon, and just, just- just as, Ernie, everybody else, everybody else spoke, and I'm trying to be a good president and not speak, but did you ever think you'd see the day where you were standing there calling me, Mr. President?
Well, I remember in 1990.
There we go, that's okay. So, under the suspension of rules, we're going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll get back to the regular order of business. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Councilman Torres. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli. Spatelli. Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
He said yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
He said yes. He said yes, he said yes.
Thank you. Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Councilman Spatelli, are you back?
Yeah, I'm back, yes.
Motion to return the regular order of business passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
Could I bring a corporate counsel to the microphone to make a suggestion to the counsel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the courtesy of allowing me to speak. And Mayor, during the recess, we had an opportunity to review some information. And I believe the suggestion was made to not pull 20...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five out. And the suggestion would be to have a special meeting on November 16th to allow for a new public hearing, another public hearing, and consideration of 2025. That would be the suggestion by at least the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Smith, I'll entertain a motion to call a special meeting on November 16th.
Correct.
At 6:00 PM. One issue meeting with a public hearing. I'll entertain that motion.
I so move.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by...
Second.
Councilwoman Alexander. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson. Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. By what I heard, nine in favor, zero opposed for this meeting on November 16th at 6:00 PM. Item number 10, I'm sorry. Item number eight. Ordinance third and final passage.
Ordinance 2020, the City of Hammond, 2021 budget proposal sponsored by the mayor.
Motion, I mean, is there a motion to...
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage as adoption of ordinance number 2020, the 2021 city budget, seconded by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mayor.
Thank you for considering the city budget. I've already presented to the council in regards to the city budget. I'm re-presenting, just in case there's people that weren't watching the first time. Our proposed 2021 budget for the City of Hammond has an $85 million tax levy, which is 2.3% less than our budget was in 2020. So instead of going up as typical, our budget's going down by 2.29%. There's 21 positions that were cut within this budget. It's never easy. The 21 positions that were cut were open positions. They won't be filled. We didn't lay anybody off with this budget. College-bound, 25% of college-bound expenses will be paid by tip, just like they were for this year. Pilot fees paid for, pilot fees paid to the City of Hammond is going to increase by $1 million this year, which is good for all of us to help with the revenue side. Pay raises built into the budget are 2% pay raises for all employees outside of police and fire, who agreed to not have pay raises this year and next year, 2021 and 2022, in lieu of adjustments we made to the pension for police and firemen. They gave up pay raises so that we'd make those changes, and we did. So police and fire are two most expensive departments. Do not have pay raises built into the budget per our contract agreement with them. Interesting facts about our budget. Public safety costs $55 million. We only collect $33 million in property taxes. So right off the bat, City of Hammond has to find $22 million just to pay for police and fire. That's without doing one street, that's without paying for one other employee or a truck or a cop car or anything else. And we still make ends meet. Our largest line items in the city, Hammond Police Department's a $32 million operation with currently around 200 and, no, it's getting budgeted for 195 police officers. They'll all be filled. Hammond firefighters are going to have 150 firemen. It'll all be filled. It's a $23 million operation. Our city's health insurance costs $12 million. That's our third most expensive line item on our budget. Water revenues, 10 and 1/2 million dollars a year. That's from sales to Illinois communities before any of our customer communities get fired up. City Hammond sells water in Illinois. Hammond Water Utilities forbidden to make money from water sales in Illinois because it's Indiana utility. So the contracts we have with Illinois is through the mayor's office and it flows into the city budget. That water revenue went up 25% this year. Real good news is the town of Homewood in Highland recently made indications that within the next year, they will be hooked up to our system and there will be a customer of Hammond Water. To give you an idea, I know we've been throwing numbers around a lot today. That's one of our cheap Illinois contracts. And Homewood will be paying $2 for 1,000 gallons of Hammond Water. $2. And, you know, we're talking about $1.90 for our customer communities. The town of Homewood is dying to get water from the City of Hammond for $2. And, you know, Homewood's not far away. We have top three sources of revenue. We make $36 million a year off casino, $33 million a year off property taxes, water, $10 and 1/2 million. So we're real proud of the budget we turned in. Like I said, it's 21 positions light, 2.3% less than it was last year. We did all that despite major headwinds posed by the pandemic. We had a 38% decrease in gaming revenue this year. Obviously with the casino boats being shut down for two and a half months, that took a major effect on our gaming revenues. We were down 10% in permits and fees, which is $50,000. We were down 40% in service sales and fees, which is $120,000. Park fees, park revenue. You know, who would have known but that Sportsplex has revenues every year of over $1 million a year. Obviously, the Sportsplex was shut down for a couple of months this year. As a result, we didn't make fees that we anticipated and built into last year's budget or this year's budget. That 20% drop is $120,000. MVH funds, because people weren't buying gas for two months because of the pandemic this year, our MVH funds, motor vehicle highway funds, dropped $600,000 this year. And people weren't making as much money this year, so they weren't paying as much in income tax. We get income tax money, and that is $425,000 less than it was last year as well. So despite all those headwinds, we still managed to turn into a budget with you, to you with 2.3% less than it was last year. Right now, projected end of year cash balance in the City of Hammond, assuming that we continue to operate as we are today, we'll have close to $5 million free and clear in the bank at the end of this year. I've been mayor for 17 years now, never been able to tell you that. Usually, we're rolling into the next year upside down. We have $5 million sitting in our bank account, unspent, untouched, unbudgeted, just sitting there. And that's something to be proud of. Projected 2021 numbers, over $12 million will be given to the Capital Improvement Board for infrastructure projects across the city. Mayor's gaming revenue will be 2.8 million as per our city ordinance. Each council district councilman will receive $467,000 as per our city ordinance. The rainy day fund, which we established per Councilman Kalwinski and Councilman Tyler's great recommendations. The rainy day fund will have $750,000 put into it at the end of this year. And the gaming advisory committee will have $750,000 given to it to support nonprofits around the city. Our budget also has overtime built into it for police, $1 million in overtime built in for the police department, including Henry units and other sources of overtime. In the fire department, $650,000 in overtime built into the budget. So we worked real hard on this budget. I'd like to thank Megan Flores and all of her employees in the Hammond Controller's office. This is Megan's first budget, and she worked real hard on it, and it's a real good budget. So thank you to Megan and to everybody that worked so hard to make this happen. Thank you to Hammond Council for your consideration. Now I'm available to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Torres.
I'd just like to say that I have some questions about the budget, but I met with Controller Flores. She gave me a couple hours on two different days. She answered all the questions and satisfied. I, she's an awesome controller, very knowledgeable. And I, after looking at it, because of the circumstances we're in and unpredictable, even in the coming future, I think is a well-said budget.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to thank all of the department heads for coming to the budget hearing meeting we had last week. And I know for Councilwoman Alexander and I, of course, this is our first budget as members of the city council. So really appreciated everyone walking through the budget changes from last year to this year and any nuances that are going to be presented to us in 2021. It was very helpful and led us to have a deeper level of understanding of where our money is going and where it's coming from.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Same, just like Councilman Tyler said. It was refreshing to understand the actual city budget since the book was so big and getting those critical questions answered to let, especially let me know and to let all of us know how things were flowing and that we will continue to be able to stay afloat and be able to come out of any debt or anything like that and knowing that the taxes are coming in, even though slowly. And then understanding that we'll still be able to sustain for the next budget year. So that was good. So thank you, Megan, and I echo him on thanking the department heads for coming out and spending that time with us to help us understand because it was definitely needed.
Mayor, on behalf of the council, I think we can all thank you for making the department heads available last Monday in the meeting we had and the questions answered. So thank you to your staff and yourself.
Councilman Warple, you know, I think they were real good meetings. I appreciate the council asking questions because we worked real hard on this budget. And you asking questions and making suggestions is how it's supposed to work. So I appreciate everybody. I think this was a real collaborative budget, and I appreciate all the hard work everybody put into it.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
No.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, the budget passes eight in favor, one opposed.
Mr. President.
Clerk Golick.
I'd like to remind the council that the council on the budget needs to sign off on Form 5586-5 requesting your signature and how you voted. So please stop by tomorrow in the clerk's office to sign off. For those of you that aren't here, your secretary will give you a call to remind you.
Thank you. Yeah, ready for 2021, right?
Ordinance 2021, the 2021 budget proposal for Hammond redevelopment.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2021.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, ordinance number 2021 passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2022, the 2021 budget proposal for the sanitary district of Hammond Sewer Maintenance Fund 608-8201 and the Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund, number 309, also known as 8280, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Tyler.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of 2022 by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spatelli, I believe. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance number 2023, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance, heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for final passage of 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines for final passage and adoption of 2023, seconded by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mayor.
In this ordinance, you will find that, just like in redevelopment, all employees outside of the police officers and firefighters are scheduled to receive a 2% pay raise in the year 2021. So those are the raises you'll see. There's not one other raise outside of the 2% pay raise. Police and fire personnel, because of the agreement they made with us in their contract, are scheduled to receive 0% pay raises in 2021 and in 2022. 2023 and 2024, they'll get 1% in each of those years. So they agree to go 0011 in exchange for the changes we made to their pension. Any questions from the council?
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, Mr., Mayor, can you just talk about when this, the raise was agreed upon, this 2%?
Sure. We, we were, this is this year, after municipal election year, one of the first orders of business for a mayor is to start negotiating with police and fire contracts. Teamsters, operated engineers are up as well, and we're in the process of negotiating with them. Usually, when I approach a contract negotiation, I assume that, I'm the type of boss, I believe in pay raises, not excessive, we work for the taxpayers, but I do believe in 2% pay raises. And it's something I've talked about before. I did that because of who I was when I was in the Navy. I made $23,000 the last year I was in the Navy. And I remember what a 1% and a 2% pay raise was. And I swore to myself, if I ever become boss, I'm going to be the type of boss that gives pay raises. So I approach contract negotiations assuming that police and firemen are probably going to get 2222 over four years. I'm not going to make them fight for it. That's just how I feel as a person. I feel like you're entitled to a 2% pay raise because you're probably losing that to inflation anyway. All right? I approach contracts with police and fire this way. They were asking for something that was more expensive in return of a 2% pay raise. However, we felt, the administration felt, that what they were asking for with their pension would save us money in the long run by getting more expensive police officers and firefighters to retire earlier, like this year. Our police officers and firemen that have seniority have six weeks of vacation, a very high salary. And quite frankly, if they retired and we replaced them with a brand-new firefighter or a police officer, the cost would go down dramatically. 60%, 70% would be the savings we'd experience with the new firefighter or police officer. So we took the gamble that instead of giving 2% pay raises to police officers and firemen, we would agree to change their pension as they asked and hoping that we would see a lot of retirees as a result of the changes we made. So in exchange for, in consideration, using legal terminology, of the pension adjustments we made, Councilman Tyler, next year, the fireman and police officer pension will go up dramatically, but they're not going to be getting a pay raise. But what we're doing, Councilman Berry, is smart business. The state picks up a lot of the cost of the pension increase, and quite frankly, it's dramatic how much the firemen and policemen will get difference pension-wise. It's enough to make you want to retire sooner rather than later. And I think that's good for the City of Hammond, Councilman Berry, because in some departments, we have bad diversity numbers, and we want to get better. And if some of our more senior firemen and police officers retire, that gives us an opportunity to hire newer, younger, more diverse police officers and firemen so that at the end of the day, our police department and our fire department look like the city that they police and they protect. So that's our goal, Councilman Berry. I do think that the changes we made in the pension for police officers were worth it for them to take a zero. And I do believe that we will see a lot of police officers and firemen retire because of the changes we made. So thank you for the question, Councilman.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance number 2024, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all policemen and firemen of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance, heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for final passage of 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spatelli to final passage and adoption of 2024. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, 2024 passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2026, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance creating a new fund, number 260, for the FY 2021 Lake County Drunk Driving Task Force grant funds.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
I move for final passage of 2026.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spatelli, seconded by Councilwoman Vines for final passage and adoption of ordinance 2026. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Lake County Driving Task Force grant was awarded to the City of Hammond for $80,000 for the purpose of preventing drunk driving injuries and fatalities.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, 2026 passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 20-27, sponsored by Councilman Raichos, and ordinance to amend ordinance number 7661, also known as sections 160.01, 160.2, 160.03, and 160.99 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to the General Maintenance Code and its application to all properties within the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Raichos.
I move we pass a final passage and adoption for ordinance 20-27.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilman Raichos, seconded by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Raichos.
This is, like it said in the title, it's a way to clean up some ordinances that we passed in the past, try to eliminate inconsistencies in the Hammond Municipal Code and to enhance the enforcement of the code. And also just, just to make sure it's a, it's a cleanup ordinance so we comply with all other codes as well.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, ordinance 2027 is adopted, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2028, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli and the Hammond Land Commission, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers 9461 and 9405, being an ordinance amending ordinance 8514 for an amendment to Title 29, Overlay Zoning Districts, to establish new provisions for development within the Oxbow Landing Overlay Zoning District.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Final passage of 2028.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spatelli to final passage and adoption of 2028, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just...
Councilman Torres.
Just that we're in a new item, and you didn't announce new and unfinished business.
Pardon me?
You're, we're in new and unfinished business now.
No, we're still on ordinances.
We're under final passage.
There's a notice of intent in new and unfinished business on this ordinance, but we haven't got that far yet. We're, if we pass it, we won't need the notice of intent.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
This was three lots, 2901, 2111, 2929, Carlson Drive, Oxbow Landing. Here's resubdivated plots into two lots. Lots will be .95 acre, 2.601 acres. The lots met the minimal size requirement for C4, which is general commercial district, an Oxbow Landing overlay district.
Thank you, Councilman Spatelli. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show 2028 is adopted, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Resolutions, there are.
Introductions.
I'm sorry, introduction of ordinances. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Ordinance 2029, ordinance number 2029, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, upon recommendation of the Hammond Economic Development Commission, designating a certain area within the city as an economic development target area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
First and second reading, refer to council as a whole. The meeting's set for November 9th at 5:30.
Is there a public hearing with that, Councilman Spitali?
Pardon me?
Is there a public hearing with that, too?
There was a, coming with the resolution, yes, not on this.
So motion's been made for first and second reading, council as a whole, at 5:30 PM on November 9th, with a public hearing on November 9th, correct?
At 5:30 our meeting.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Who was that?
Rakos.
Okay, Councilman Rakos.
I believe we need to have the public hearing on November 23rd for this.
So you're making the motion that the public hearing not be on the 9th, and the public hearing is on November 23rd? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Is Africa still here?
And under further, Africa?
Yes, as far as the ordinance that's going forth, we would just ask that at this point in time that it be brought out, it goes through first and second reading today and then brought out on November 9th. The actual public hearing is for the economic revitalization area declaratory resolu, ERA, for the declaratory resolution. So they're two separate ones.
So there's no public hearing necessary for this ordinance?
Not for the ordinance. The public hearing is necessary for the resolution, but for this, it was just, I believe it was referred and referred to committee and it'll be brought out November 9th.
So, Councilman Spitali, you want to amend your ordinance to just council as a whole on first and second reading at 5:30 PM on November 9th?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
President Warple, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, resolutions.
Item A, resolution.
We, there's no action being taken on 20R17 tonight.
But we do have to say that there will be a public hearing. We have to announce that, correct?
Yes, the public hearing.
Yes.
Public hearing for a declaration is, will be for November 23rd.
Well, whoa, 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 whoa. There's no action being taken on it, so we'll entertain the public hearing in New and Unfinished Business?
I think you can do it right now.
Okay. So a motion's been made for a public hearing on the declaratory resolution. You want to go ahead and read it by title, Clerk Golick? You want to go ahead and read what the public hearing's for by title on the resolutions? Read it by title.
On 20R17?
Yes.
A declaratory resolution determining that a certain area of the City of Hammond, Indiana be designated as the Oxbow Landing Economic Revitalization Area Number Two, to which deductions from assessed valuation may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the City of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
So by title, we are scheduling a public hearing on November 23rd, 2020?
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay.
Yes, it is.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
President Warple, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. On the New and Unfinished Business, the notice of intent is no longer needed because 2028 passed, so does anybody else have any New and Unfinished Business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move to create a capital improvements committee.
A motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines for the council to create a capital improvement board committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any other New and Unfinished Business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to remind everyone that this year's trunk and treat will take place at the Hammond Sports Plex on Friday, October 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Residents and children will stay in your car, and the organizations and individuals will bring the candy to you. So just wanted to remind everybody, and I believe, I might even correct if I'm wrong, but trick-or-treating will still also occur Saturday evening as well.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
Berry, Councilman Tyler reminded me to remind everybody that trick-or-treating is scheduled for 5:00 to 7:00 in Hammond City Hall on Halloween, oh, excuse me, in City Hammond, I'm sorry, it's been a long meeting, on Halloween, as normal. We're still going to have the crews on the street as we normally do, protecting our children. I would anticipate a heavier than normal year for a lot of people because a lot of our neighboring communities are not having Halloween, not having trick-or-treating. I imagine that's not going to stop the hardcore kids from trick-or-treating, so. But anyway, thank you for, Councilman Tyler, for reminding us about Halloween coming up this weekend.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any other New and Unfinished Business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
With that being said about trick-or-treating, I just ask that everybody mask up. And if you are, if residents are not participating, make sure your lights are off so that people won't come to your homes, and that you continue to wear masks, wear rubber gloves, things like that to help keep everybody safe.
Thank you. Is there any other New and Unfinished Business? Hearing none. New and Unfinished Business is closed. Last item on the agenda is public expression. The first name on the list was John Haynes. I don't see him here anymore. Ernie, he's gone, too. Mary Ellen Slezak.
There is a lot of people that can't afford a big increase. There's people that they dream about going to Starbucks. They can't afford coffee from there. It's not just this bill itself, the water, it's all the extra charges. See, I mean, on our taxes, we get tax bill, we got a little charge in there for sanitary. We've got the sanitary on here. That adds a lot to the bills. Everything is going up, and people on a fixed income, lower-income people, they're going to be really hurt. There's supposed to be a 1.3%, I believe, increase in the Social Security checks. Medicare is going to go up. That's going to eat up any increases unless you get a really big Social Security check. You might be lucky to get a few dollars more. But we're just like in squeeze play. Everything's going up, and then we got the school city within a year. I expect the second part of the referendum to kick in, and that's going to be the whopper. So consider the people that are on fixed income. The demographics of Hammond show a lot of people are hurting. They're barely making it. So be wise. Maybe a little increase might be warranted, but not as much as being proposed. That's just way overboard, and I think it's uncalled for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker was Robert Tuedo, and I can see he's gone. And the final speaker tonight was George Smith. Is he still here? Seeing nobody else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.